We'll do it. Good evening. We are back at 7:01. I would like to call the Centerville Board of Education meeting for Monday, December 13th, 2021, to order. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Here.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Here.
Dr. Rohr?
Here.
Megan Sparks?
Here.
Mr. Schreier?
Here. Item number three of the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four on the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda's presented, please?
So moved. Second?
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item number five, honors. I will turn that over to Dr. Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Schreier. It's an honor for me to introduce to those in attendance and to the public that will watch this later on, Mr. Brandon Barimetti. Brandon wears many hats here at Centerville High School, but one of those is that he is the director of the Centerville Jazz Band. So Brandon has a concert tonight, so I've asked him to come here and maybe just share a little bit about this awesome experience that the Jazz Band had Thanksgiving when they traveled to New York City and participated in the Macy's Day Parade. So Brandon, we thank you for being here. We know you have a busy night ahead of you, so thanks for being here.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Thank you to the school board. As Dr. Henderson said, I do have a concert tonight. I don't normally wear tuxedos to the school board. I feel a little overdressed tonight, but again, thank you for having us, for having me here, and I just really appreciate the opportunity to kind of let you all know about our amazing trip to New York City. I can tell you that our students represented themselves just with class and dignity and with just so much pride marching down the streets of New York City. And I've heard from so many people that have reached out and have offered congratulations to me, to the students, to the staff, and it just really has hit me how impactful this was for our community, and it's been really incredible. I've gotten emails from all over the place, from people that I've never met before that just happened to be tuning into the parade and were just very, very impressed by what Centerville did. And I think any opportunity to put Centerville on the map, especially in a positive light, is a really good thing. I can't think of a bigger stage or a bigger opportunity than this. Millions of people live in person, millions of people watching on television. And, you know, one of the coolest things in the parade were, I vividly remember, because it was all so overwhelming and such a blur, but I just remembered hearing people shouting, "Go Ohio," or they would shout, "OH," and everybody would shout, "IO." And I heard a lot of EP, ND, back and forth, people shouting out, you know, "I'm class of 1987, I'm class of 1976," whatever. Like, I was floored. I couldn't believe in the streets of New York City that elk pride would be that, that hot. And it was just such a remarkable experience. So our kids are still on cloud nine, and I'm just very, very proud of them and very proud to represent this school and this district and this community. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Brandon, and thanks for your leadership. We know you had hundreds and hundreds of students and parents and chaperones, and it was just a great effort on your part and your team's part, so we thank you again. So congratulations. We know you're heading off to have a great concert here, so again, congratulations. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. We are ready for item number six on the agenda, which is the hearing of the public. Board of Education provides this as a convenient opportunity for public comment before any official action is taken. If you would like to address the board, and I see we have a line here, please state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes for our board policy, as we do have pre-scheduled reports and action items on the agenda. As we usually do, the board will listen to all who speak, but generally not engage in discussion or dialogue at this time. Matters requiring follow-up will be directed to Dr. Henderson. Individual board members can always be contacted for a set meeting appointment, and written correspondence can be mailed to the board office.
President Schreier, would you like to...
Yes, please. Thank you, Megan. Come ahead.
Hello. My name is Melissa Perkins. My address is not listed. Can she post these publicly? I have in front of me the oath of office. It is what each of you have signed when you took this position as board member. Before beginning, because of your duties, a member shall take the oath of office, which may administer by the treasurer and any member of the board, member of the General Assembly, judge of court, or any notary public. Following is suggested oath, but other oaths may be used. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as members of the Board of Education of the Centerville School District of the University of Ohio, to the best of your ability and accordance with the laws, now and effective and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office? And I'm assuming all of you have signed this. Some of you have been on this board for 30 years. I wanted to reiterate that you took an oath to the public. You are public servants. You listen to us. We tell you what we want, not the other way around. What you're doing to our kids is unconstitutional. I have a 13-year-old in this school system. I have one that graduated in 2018. My 13-year-old said to me, "Mom, I wish we could turn back time and go back to 2018." And it caught me off guard because he said it without, I had no idea what even inspired him to say this. And I looked at him and I said, "Why? What was in 2018?" He goes, "Everybody was happier then." That's sad. It's sad that a 13-year-old recognizes that nobody's happy with what's going on in our school district. It's sad that you took an oath to the Constitution and you all are breaking it with these masks and these COVID vaccines. So with that being said, I'm going to hand you my affidavit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Don Wagner of the Ohio Journal Assembly, and I am here to talk to you gentlemen and ladies about the Constitution of the United States of America. Did you take an oath? If you took an oath, you're violating it. So there is nothing in the Ohio Medical Board of Rights that gives you any power to do what you're doing. When you go to the mask, and we step up to the mask on the box, it says, "Does not protect against COVID-19." So you're giving an illusion that it's protecting, but it's not protecting, and it's proven by the mask company. I think there's a point we've got to go to. Vaccines are still in clinical trials until 2023. Still, you cannot approve something that's in clinical trials. You know that, Doc. In clinical, I'm sorry, I'm wrong, gentlemen. I apologize. They're still in clinical trials. Does anybody know who owns the patent to the coronavirus? Nobody? Phil Gates, who is tied heavily in the pharmaceutical company, this is a money area. They made $290 billion, and you assisted them so you could supplement your budget here for $8 million. You got S R 1, S R 2, and S R 3. I don't understand. Doesn't make sense. Testing is a rare, you guys know this, correct? 73% of these tests are considered false positives. Our governor was wrong when he said, "I have COVID," and it turned out he didn't have COVID because it was a faulty test. LeBron James just did it. He's from Ohio. When we do one Ohioan wrong, we do all Ohioans wrong, and this is treason. I'm stating to you across the board, you needn't take that affidavit seriously. You've got seven days. Only eight days. It's coming.
I've got the affidavit. Thank you.
Mask company admits that they do not protect vaccine trials. Pennsylvania has lifted the mask mandate. The state of Pennsylvania has declared it's unconstitutional. That means, we're telling you it's unconstitutional. The Constitution's telling you that it's unconstitutional. You guys aren't listening, so you're culpable, every single one of you. Keep my notes right. Mr. Dahl, you represent the school board here, right? You're on the school board. You represent the teachers' union, and you represent Teamsters, the buses. Isn't that a conflict of interest? It states clearly...
Stop, stop.
It states clearly...
First amendment...
No, I have the right to talk. It's the First Amendment. I have the right to talk.
Board member, you've said...
Yes, I'm calling out Mr. Dahl in that affidavit, and I'm calling him out here.
Do not do that in hearing of the public.
Please. Yeah. I'm sorry.
Please do not attack a board member.
Not attack. I asked a question. Do he represent? And if he does, it's a conflict of interest. No, I'm asking if he represents. It's a question.
Well, it sounds very attacking.
No. No, I have the right, Sullivan versus in here at times. It's upheld, and it's supreme court. I can talk any way I want to talk in public addressing. I'm being nice, but now you're overriding my constitutional right. Do you want to dance with my constitutional rights? This is not a game. This is a clown show. This is not the way this works. You violated the Constitution of the United States of America.
Sir, sir, okay. You're three minutes, sir. We got your point. Thank you for speaking.
It doesn't matter.
It does matter.
It always doesn't.
You guys, we're going to move on to the next...
I'm going to hand each of you the Constitution of the United States so that I know you have it.
Can I have some...
I have an affidavit. I just...
All right, thank you. I just...
I want to thank Mr. Henderson and the principals for doing a good job when the breaths happen recently, so I do want to definitely say thank you. So, thank you. You guys did a very good job. And then I sent you all emails about this, but all, all the cases so far on the Omicron variant, even the CDC talks about how it's very mild. So I'm hoping you won't get scared off of the original plan to lift the mask mandate after the vaccines were available to the youngest kids, like six weeks after that, which would be around the time schools start back. So I'm just hoping you please don't get scared. I sent you all the information. It's not that scary. And the cases, at least four days ago, in our 4x4x9, 4x4x10, they aren't even in the red, they aren't even in the orange, they were in the yellow. And that was just four days ago. I haven't checked since then. Anyway, I could do all the facts all day, but I just wanted to say, tell them a quick little story regarding masks. So I worked Election Day in November. That was interesting. But anyway, we were together, people working, two different sides, and we were working for like, what, 15 hours? I don't know. Hours and hours together. And near the end of the day, I mean, we hadn't seen any of each other's faces the whole 14, 15 hours. And somebody had a great idea at the end, but they said, "Let's all take off our masks, stand six feet apart," because that was when COVID was kind of more dangerous, or whatever. So anyway, we all stood apart, and everybody took their masks off, and we're grown adults. We just all started laughing, and we're pointing at each other, and we're like, "You have a mustache," and, you know, it was just, we had this amazing human moment. And so what I want to say is that, I'm not trying to blame you guys, but you guys are making the decision to keep the masks in place. So you are kind of stealing this from the kids. I mean, they've been going to school all these months. They don't know. I mean, we saw people, what, a week and a half. They don't know what each other looks like, they don't know what their teacher looks like. It's sick. And the parents who want masks, their kids can have it if they're optional. So I'm just asking you, please, parents should be responsible for the choices of their own kids. If I want my kid not to wear a mask, that should be how it is. It shouldn't be you people sitting up here and telling my child what they're doing. So that's about it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Husband and wife team. So my name's Jay Johns, 336 Merrill Hurst Drive, and I've never spoken here before. Kind of, my wife has been the voice of the community and sort of my point of view. And something came to my attention a few days ago, totally off the subject of masks, all the current topics, and that's some of the books that are in the libraries here in the district. You know, our kids are dealing with more than any group of kids have ever dealt with before, and there are dozens of books in the school libraries, talking outside of the public libraries here in the schools, that are wholly inappropriate. You know, history is being retro-rectal. Kids can't read Huck Fett, but they're able to get a hold of books in the school libraries that are borderline pornography. I don't know if you've seen these, if you know anything about them, but they're pretty disgusting. When these books are being ordered, I have to wonder about the person who's placing the order. What sort of lunatic looks at something like this and thinks that this is appropriate for a kid in secondary? Any kid that, well, if you walk in the library and check out this book called "It's Perfectly Normal," it goes into graphic description of how to have sex, how to masturbate, and how to have anal sex. I don't know about you, but I think there's something really, really wrong with that. And I think as a board, you have a responsibility to know what these crazy people are doing who work for the school district that order this sort of smut for our kids to look at. This isn't appropriate for the high school. I look at this, and I'm embarrassed to show it to you. Let me read you a quick excerpt of one of the things in the book. "The clitoris is a small mound of skin about the size of a pea. When the clitoris is touched and rubbed, the female's body feels good both outside and inside. It feels kind of tingly, kind of warm, kind of nice, and it feels sexy." A second grade can get this book out of their library.
I'm pretty adult.
I just wanted to bring this to your attention. It's not appropriate. Kids are dealing with way too much already, and something needs to be done like this. Probably it'd be done if the person who places the orders puts these books in libraries. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Steve Crane. I live at 301 Hensbrook Drive at Centerville, and I was just wondering, when, what was your reasoning for bringing the gender-fluid materials into the Centerville curriculum for elementary and middle school students? What reasoning was that?
Could you repeat that in the background, sir? I can't hear what you said.
Yeah. The question was, what was your reasoning for bringing gender-fluid materials into the Centerville curriculum for elementary students and middle school students?
Thank you.
I can't answer that.
Why?
It's your job. Because he's already said he's not going to respond.
Why won't you respond?
I didn't respond. I'm just saying I can't answer that. I responded, sir.
So is it your, your decision to bring this into the school, did you notify the parents when you brought this in?
Definitely not. We haven't notified the parents anytime that we've entered into ever teaching anything like that in different areas of conversation that we have. We always send home a permission slip, and we provide some options for parents. We've done that for years and years and years.
Okay, but did the majority of the parents say, "Yeah, that's okay to have that stuff put in the curriculum"?
They did.
I never got a form. I never got a form. I'd like to see the form.
Respectfully disagree with that tremendously.
Yeah. We would like to see the form.
Thank you.
My name's Lisa Stowell, 880 West Quip Road. My husband Matt teaches at the school. On August 20th, the district was provided with documentation from my children's medical health provider that wearing a mask or face covering would cause significant medical concern. After zero response, my husband and I reached out. We gave it 10 days to be addressed. After pushback from the central office, we reached out to the school nurses. The nurses said they can address all health concerns with students except masks. Those go straight to Dr. Henderson. After the nurse submitted our medical documentation to Dr. Henderson, we received an email. In the email, he wrote, and I quote, "Our staff will be happy to work with your children to teach them the pro-social behavior of wearing a face covering to protect themselves and others." Our staff is my husband and the children's father. After this email, the doctor called the school nurse at one of the schools. I'd like to read you what he said in response to that. "I called the school nurse on Tuesday and got a cold, somewhat terse interaction. I inquired about their levels of mask exemptions, if they had a policy so physicians like me could be aware of how to relate those options that we may discuss with our patients' parents. She said words to the effect of, 'There are no exemptions. Even children with special needs have to wear masks. If they can't put their own mask on, someone does it for them.'" Then she said I needed to call the central office. I called, left two messages, have not heard back. "I quickly sensed that the usual professional pathway that community physicians and school nurses use for quick communication about students of mutual concern may not exist in your school district. They didn't even wish to reveal a simple process of mask exemptions. I'm not optimistic after that encounter with the nurse." So what I'd like to say is, that sign up there says, "Centerville City Schools, a great place to learn." You're in the education business, not the healthcare business. I don't understand why it's all about COVID. I don't understand why you force our kids to wear masks all day, yet none of you come to any of the basketball games and force the parents to. If you go out in the community, the majority of people are not wearing a mask.
Amen.
We would like you to reconsider, and I'm submitting an affidavit of interference with my healthcare provider. Do you have a mention?
Go ahead, sir.
My name's Matt Stowell. I am a, I live at 880 West Quip Road. I am a teacher here at Centerville High School underneath Jack Nervall over in the East Unit. I have two children that attend Centerville City Schools, one at the middle school, one at the high school. And just for the record, as a teacher with the kids wearing masks, it is very difficult for me to know who the children are. It is very difficult. I just wanted to note that. I've been fortunate enough to work with some outstanding principals over the year, pretty much every one of them, the current one included, and I have the utmost respect for them. The administration is constantly reminding us to enforce the mask policies in schools. Whether or not I believe in these policies or not, I'm obligated to do so, and I do. I do my best to teach the pro-social behavior of wearing a mask covering, whether I like it or not. They are put forth, and they are the policies. Schools have people in place, experts, I guess, that make those decisions. The treasurer budgets the money for the school system, the transportation directors in control of the buses, and the principals in charge of the buildings. It's the way it is in most school districts. This has literally changed in the course for the medical intentions, for the masks. School nurses advocate for students and their educational setting, focusing attention on students' physicals, health, and wellness. They work and oversee the operations of clinics in these buildings with assistance by other registered nurses. They are the decision-makers who work together to keep students healthy. They implement a care plan when health concerns arise. Well, my daughters had health concerns from a board-certified doctor, but the nurses were out of that loop. They are the educated ones who know what to do, yet the superintendent chooses to make that decision. The nurses are far more qualified for that, but yet were pushed to the side. I had a serious problem with that because that's my family. Those are my two daughters, who are medically exempt everywhere else in the world except in the school they attend. My daughter's doctor and my daughters were not given this opportunity as other kids get in this corporation. Anytime in my 28 years of teaching, I have never heard of a doctor's note being denied by anyone. I mean, I can go further and say, if a parent sends in a note, 99% of the time, we accommodate that. I know that from being inside the school. We respect parents, and we really respect doctors. Any child that brings me a note, says, like, from a doctor, I'm going to abide by it, whether I believe it or not. He's the expert.
Time's up. It's been three minutes.
All right, well, I have affidavit as well for the course of incident happened.
You can pass them up. Thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi there. My name's Amanda Graff. My address is at 1300 South Side Circle. I am a physician in the community working in our hospitals. I am a mother of two children in the district. I am a Centerville graduate and was in this community for a while. And I guess first of all, I'd like to say thank you, because I appreciate that you're safety experts, and I appreciate that you are doing everything that you can to keep my children and the other children in the community safe. I will tell you that being in the hospital and watching, watching people die over this pandemic has been distressing, not only to me, but obviously to my children who are scared of everything that goes to work, why they're blowing the fire, you know. And so I, no, I'm very grateful for everything that you're doing. I think that it is incredibly privileged to wait until after the winter break and those couple of weeks when we typically see the surface, to see what our numbers look like before we discuss taking the masks up winter, spring, and we're sure that by the springtime we are safe to do so. You know, someone who spoke a little bit ago said something about their children being sad that it's not, a couple of years ago, and I will say that my children have voiced the exact same sentiment, but they do so from a place of compassion and empathy. They're sad for the people and the families that have lost loved ones. They are sad for their friends. They are sad that school does not look normal, but they are very committed to keeping other people safe. My middle schooler was very concerned about her advisory teacher who has some risk, and she's very scared that if her classmates take off their masks, that their teacher could be at risk. And that's where they come from. They come from a place of empathy, a place of like, protect those around them, not very worried about themselves, but they are worried about their community members. And to be very honest, I'm glad that they're learning that, that sense of community, that sense of empathy now. I think it will serve them very well in the future. And I'm very grateful to our school counselors. So I would ask, my ask up here today is, any additional resources that you can provide to them, I think would be very valuable. We've certainly got to know several of the school counselors, some with special needs, and a daughter who has some gender fluidity-related concerns. And so the school counselors have been very good this year at taking interest in them, watching out for them. them, watching out for them, but obviously, they are stretched very, very thin. So if there are additional resources that could ever be sent their way, I would certainly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sure.
We still have five minutes. You're good.
Sure, go ahead, please.
Just make sure the mic's down so we can hear you.
Okay, sorry, I'm short. My name is Denise Wright. I live at 7157 Fallen Oak Trace. I moved here in the late 80s with my two young children, and they attended Central High Schools throughout. And now I have six grandchildren. One just recently graduated from high school. My concern is the masks, and I don't want to be offensive. I brought some materials, just, I've got 47 studies on why masks prove that they're ineffective. And my biggest thing is also the side effects and health implications on wearing the mask. And there are 32 different press releases regarding this. I only brought this, but I thought maybe I could share it with you. I just respectfully ask that you would give the parents the choice. I understand that there are parents that do want their kids to wear a mask, and I totally understand their concerns and their fears. But I also think we need to think of the other parents who find that wearing masks is hurtful to the children. There's a lot of anxiety and depression. My grandson, who is a freshman, is actually nervous about going to school because of all the fights. I didn't realize that the high school was having these issues, but I know that there's been a lot of fights. I know there was a gun that was brought to school. I don't know the circumstances, I just read the article, but my grandson knows about that, and he wants me to pick him up at lunch every day, and I'm not able to do that. So anyways, I do think that that has something to do with it. I think the kids are very stressed, and I know they have a lot of anxiety. So I would respectfully ask that you would read this material.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jessica Hurtman. I am not giving you my address publicly. It is on this affidavit. I'm actually giving you two affidavits. One is 23 pages long, full of truth. It's all in there.
One more?
Yes, sir.
I do appreciate, Dr. or Mr. John Dill mentioned that numbers don't lie.
State your name, please.
My name's Scott Taylor. I live in Mindysburg, Ohio. And numbers don't lie. I agree with that. I think even one of the persons spoke earlier about statistics. If you go to the CDC dashboard, students have a 0% chance of dying of COVID right now.
Ooh.
It's also known that those that die of COVID have subnormal D3. Well, what happened if instead of pushing masks, you pushed D3? So that'd be even closer to zero.
It's happened a lot of times.
50% of the people that die of COVID are age 80 or older. If you're under 30, you have a 1% chance of dying of COVID. If you're under 40, you have a 3% chance of dying of COVID of the entire group of people that have died. If you're under 60, I think you're 6%. Clearly, this is a disease that affects those who are vulnerable and those that are older. It doesn't affect students. So you have a population of students that really will not die of this.
Nobody dies.
They don't die of it. But you know, one thing I do know is that the pharma companies have no liability for whatever damage these vaccines do. They do create fear. There's a person sitting back there, and I put my tripod close to them, and they were afraid that I was getting too close to them. Clearly, that person, showing respect, of course, is very fearful, and that's generated from wearing masks. I did call an industrial hygienist one time, instead of wondering what he thinks about it. He spoke to me for 40 minutes. He said these surgical masks are designed to keep spittle from falling on patients during surgery. Never, ever designed to stop a virus, which by the way, is an aerosol. In fact, Stephen Peavy, when he heard about this, he got in an airplane, and he was really fearful. He brought a respirator with him, knowing that only a respirator will protect him from this kind of virus. You know what they did? They made him take it off because it wasn't a mask. He put an N95 mask on, which by the way, has to be fitted. So what these masks do is they generate fear.
Placebo.
And it encourages people, kids, to get a jab they don't need. And the VAERS report is all, is full of injuries. In fact, there's a, there's a lady that spoke recently on YouTube, who says, you know, I always believed the government's looking out for us, until her husband got Marokai Divus. And first, the doctor said, oh, it's that, but then they backtracked and said, no, it can't be. Finally, found a doctor that agreed with them. They said, I want to help you, but I can't give you a medical exemption. You know why? Because if he gave that guy a medical exemption, he'd be investigated. He'd be investigated for just, and there's all kinds, I saw another doctor that she was actually dismissed from a hospital because she was helping patients. It's like, why did, why did physicians not have the opportunity? So I just want to share the numbers with you. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
We are at 30 minutes, Megan.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I'm going to go to item number seven on the agenda tonight, which are the board and administrative reports, and I will turn this over to Dr. Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Schreier. The first report tonight is by Mrs. Sparks. It's our legislative report, so I'll turn it over to Mrs. Sparks.
So Senate Bill 229, the K-12 Omniscillent Bill, was sent to Governor Dewine for his approval. This bill has numerous and extensive education related provisions. It's the one we've been talking about for a couple of months now, and we'll continue to watch it to see if it is actually signed. The House passed Senate Bill 166. This bill impacts career technical education programs. It would create more pathways and give incentives for Ohio businesses to provide a workforce-based learning experience for students, and I believe that there are financial incentives. Senate Veterans and Public Safety Committee passed and accepted a substitute version of Senate Bill 23, which would expressively allow, I'm sorry, which would allow the use of cameras to capture images and videos of vehicles illegally passing a school bus and establish a civil penalty when a driver who illegally passes a school bus cannot be identified. And the House passed House Concurrent Resolution 13. This resolution would encourage Congress to enact the Sunshine Protection Act of 2021, which would permanently extend daylight savings time. The resolution now goes to the Senate for consideration, and that is the end of the report for this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sparks. Next, we have our student board reps, who I think would like to give a couple of reports on what they've been up to since last month.
Hi, my name is Zoe. The update I have for you guys is that recently, we met again at that roundtable of other students from other districts around the area. During that meeting, a lot of what we did was figuring out what our next steps are going to be. So right now, we're really in the stage of brainstorming and researching what topics we're wanting to discuss between our group.
Good evening. My name is Jacob. One thing that I want to tell you about was a meeting that Zoe and myself went to. It was at the County Education Service Center with Shannon Cox. We got to meet with some local and state legislators and discuss some issues that are really important to students. And we were there all day on Friday, and it was a really good opportunity to voice some things that are of concern to our students.
That's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you. I know now we have just a brief financial update from our treasurer, Mrs. Solomon.
I hope to have for you this month, some information on the Fair School Funding Plan. ODE has kicked out 10 more months down the road, so we're hopeful that in January, there'll be more information available for me to report to you at that time. But I did want to tell you that audit is underway, kind of right in the middle of that process, and things are going very well. So as soon as that's wrapped up, you'll be notified, and I'll give you an update at that point in time. So more to come in January, but it's kind of, we're kind of in between things right now in the forever of office.
Thank you, Laura. Next, I'd like to invite our Director of Business Operations, Mr. John Westney, who gave a detailed report earlier this evening at our work session, and he'll give just a quick overview, again, at this regular meeting.
That's correct. Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Just to be brief, just two slides here, and it really references the agenda of tonight. In my first slide, it's just a quick review for my work session discussion, I think item 10 in the agenda. I'm asking the board to approve a resolution to approve Fry Mechanical as a contractor for the rooftop project at Watts Middle School. And we'll see those prices of the week that came in and what we discussed in the work session. And in the second resolution this evening, I believe is item number 11 on the agenda, asking the board to approve the cargo bus purchase a little bit earlier than usual, so we can get out and get this started. Typically, we purchase the buses in January and February. We have budgeted for it to be PI, permanent improvement budget for the buses. I would like to consider your approval tonight in the regular agenda for the resolution. That's all I have, unless there's any questions from the board.
Hey, John, for item number 10 on the HVAC, those are permanent improvement funds as well.
That's correct.
No S for funds.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. The last item is something that we had discussed in somewhat of detail during the work session about safety protocols, specifically the mask mandate that we currently have in Central City Schools. And I did share that, you know, we were excited to come back to school in person this year. Our goal for the very beginning of the school year was to stay in school five days a week and have our students in school five days a week as well. And basically, as we did do some pivoting, as we started the school year, started with our K through 5, students masked, and then moved on to mandate all the students K through 12. By doing this, it did help us with contact tracing, and we were no longer being forced to have students quarantined outside of school. So achieving our goal of keeping our school doors open five days a week and our students in school, we've been able to achieve that. In a few days, we'll be ending the first semester, so we're excited about the progress that we've made. I indicated earlier that we have had some challenges in the area of staffing and meeting the needs of all the different pieces of the organization that we have here, and everybody has worked well as a team to make sure that we continue to stay open, and we will definitely be open the second semester as well. Earlier in the year, our numbers were such that they were very, very high. We had some numbers in the 70s of positive cases in September. That has fluctuated throughout the course of this first semester. In some cases, it has trended downward. We had 30, 24, 15, and 13 in the middle part of October. As things started to change a little bit, though, our numbers started to increase again, and coming back after Thanksgiving, they have soared again to 51 and 59 for positive COVID cases. So our goal again is to make sure that we stay in school five days a week and that we keep our students in school. And, you know, I did hear from the board, the conversation. I heard their opinions and their ideas about what we should do moving forward, and unless the board has any other additional comments, I will be making a decision within the next day or two, and we will be pushing that information out to our parent community. So we'll get that out this week, and we'll look forward to closing out this semester and moving forward from there. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to go to the action items on the agenda tonight. Item A, our treasurer's recommendations. Consider approving the November 2021 financial statements, including the monthly general fund rolling report, the monthly cash reconciliation, the monthly fund activity report, and then-and-now purchase orders approved by administration, certified by the treasurer, and supported by resolution totaling $129,046. Move.
Second.
Any, are there any questions or comments on item A? Laura, I hate to keep doing this every month, but can you please explain then-and-now purchase orders again, please?
Yes, those are purchases that the purchase order was not in place prior to the funds being obligated. This is the method or the mechanism that's put in place, and the board is aware of that. It means audit, compliance, and requirements. Many times, these are emergency types of purchases. Sometimes, we just forget, but we do our best to try to always make sure that that people are compliant first. But again, this is the compliance piece, to make sure that you're aware that that happened and that is recommended by audit.
Thank you. Anybody else? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparg?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item 8B. Consider a resolution to authorize the treasurer to request advanced payment of taxes when available during 2022. Remove. Start it. Any discussion or comments on 8B? Could you explain that a little bit, please, Laura?
We receive our tax payments twice a year. The first, the tax bills are going out right now to taxpayers into residents and are due, I believe, in January at some point. And then we will receive what are called advances. So as the county auditor collects that money, they send us portions of our tax settlement, and then we get a final settlement report, usually in March, but sometimes in April. And then there's another, the process starts over again the second half of the year in the summer through August and September. This, it's required that the board approves that we can request those advances.
So this is a compliance?
It is.
Resolution. Okay. Anybody else? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparg?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item 8C. Consider approving the minutes of the following Board of Education meeting, November 22nd, 2021, regular meeting.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparg?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item number nine on the agenda are the superintendent's recommendations. 9A, Schedule B, is the listing of certificated personnel recommended for employment, change of employment status, or change of contract status. So the superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status, or change of contract status for the certificated personnel listed on Schedule B for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff listed on Schedule C for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedules D and D1 for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments. The superintendent also recommends the granting of leaves of absence for the personnel listed on Schedule E for the reasons and on the dates given. Can I have a motion, please? Remove. Any questions or comments or anything on item nine? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparg?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item 10 on the agenda. Consider accepting the lowest and best bid for the procurement and installation of rooftop HVAC units at Watts Middle School from Fry Mechanical for a total cost of $1,885,375. Remove. This was discussed, I think, this evening. Any other questions or comments on 10? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparg?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item 11. Consider accepting bids to the Southwest Ohio Educational Purchasing Council and approving the bids for the purchase of the following Rush International Conventional and Cardinal Bloomberg Transit buses. 384-passenger Bloomberg Transit without luggage compartments for a total of $371,163. 172-passenger Rush International Conventional Students with Disabilities Bus for $105,804. And 472-passenger Rush International Conventional Buses for a total of $386,520. The entire total of the resolution is... The entire total of the resolution is $863,487. Can I have a motion, please? Move.
Second.
Again, this was discussed at length earlier. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Number 12. Any final comments for the good of the order from the board? Go ahead, Dave.
This is Jeff's last meeting as president. We usually take a moment to recognize your diligence and hard work over this very tough year or so. I think myself and the rest of the board and administration want to thank you for your year's service. I don't think you'll get a gavel, but--
That's fine. Thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate everybody in this room, believe it or not. I appreciate everybody in this room and all the help that I've gotten this year. Any other final comments from the board?
Jeff, I'd like to thank everyone who's been coming to our board meetings. It's nice to hear from everybody. We'll listen to all that come, and absolutely will treat everyone with respect. And thank you for coming, and I hope we'll get past this pandemic issue. I hope you all continue to come to all of our board meetings in the future.
Thanks, John. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Excuse me. I just want to say that I had the opportunity this past week to participate in the last of the strategic planning design team meetings, and we've been meeting since August, August 11th, August, yeah. And it's been an amazing experience. I really want to thank Mr. Trello and Mrs. Tollaby and Dr. Henderson for their leadership and working with our consultant from the Hamilton County ESC. It's been just an amazing process, very interesting seeing how it all played out, how we started with a real wide breadth of what we wanted to see and what we wanted to create for the district, and just slowly watching it get drilled down to a nice -- what's going to end up soon being a nice, neat package that we can present to the community, and just all of the steps in between. It's been fabulous, and I really appreciate the process.
There'll be a presentation that's somewhere ago. It'll be in a few months. You guys will all see what happens and what they have been doing.
Yeah.
Cool.
It's been fabulous.
Great. Anybody else? Okay, item number 13 on the agenda pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1. Can I have a motion that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the employment of an employee or official of the school district? No other action will be taken except to come out of executive session to adjourn. Can I have a motion, please?
Simo? Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreier?
Yes. Again, thank you, everybody, for coming. Happy holidays.